All right, well, it's 6:45. So I'm going to go ahead and start the tutorials and start taking in names. Folks, we're expecting kind of a large turnout today, so. Hi, Chris. So we're going to need folks to pay close attentions to the tutorial today. All right, here we go. Hi, I'm Mike Sinello, and I'll be your Zoom meeting administrator for tonight's town council meeting. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM Eastern. Before the meeting starts, I put together this brief instructional video to help you get better acquainted with the Zoom meetings platform and how this virtual town council meeting will operate. Before we get started, we would like to kindly ask non-council participants to please keep your audio and video muted throughout unless called upon. As you are brought into the meeting, for example, from a waiting room, you will have the momentary ability to unmute your video. We kindly ask that you refrain from doing so, and each participant's video will be manually muted upon entry one at a time. If you do not want to see non-video participants, hover your mouse over a non-video participant's video image, click these three dots highlighted in blue, and select "Hide Non-Video Participants." If you want to see all the councilmen at the same time, rather than focusing only on the councilman who is speaking, select "Gallery View" in the top right corner of the viewing panel. If you would like to participate in public comment, you must first raise your hand, and you'll be added to the list of public comment participants on a first-come, first-served basis until the meeting's commencement at 7:00 PM. When we say "raise your hand," we don't mean literally hold your hand up to the camera. To raise your hand, first make sure the Participants Panel is open at the right of your screen. You can open the Participants Panel by clicking the Participants icon at the bottom of your screen. Once the Participants Panel is open, to raise your hand, select "Raise Hand" in the bottom right corner of the Participants Panel.
Michael, can you hear me?
For telephone-only participants, to raise your hand, press *9 on your telephone touchpad. I will be taking names for public comment as soon as this video finishes, and at the mayor's request, we'll be calling on participants for public comment on a first-come, first-served basis. Once you're called upon, I will send out a request to unmute yourself, as you will be self-muted upon entry. To unmute yourself in desktop, click the unmute icon in the bottom-left corner of the viewing panel, and which looks like a microphone with a red slash through it, or simply select "Unmute" in the request message. For telephone-only participants, press *6 to mute or unmute yourself. Once you've been unmuted for public comment, you'll have five minutes to address the council. Time will be kept by the acting sergeant-at-arms. We'll alert you when you have one minute left. When your time has expired, the sergeant-at-arms will let you know, and I will then mute you at either the mayor's request or at the request of the sergeant-at-arms. I will only act upon their instruction throughout the meeting, and will neither mute nor unmute except upon entry any participant otherwise. For the record, as a Zoom meeting administrator, I will not be an active participant in the meeting. This means, once the meeting is started, my camera and microphone will be muted unless otherwise called upon by either the mayor or the sergeant-at-arms. The final request before this video ends is to please be aware of your surroundings. Please be aware of background noise, such as dogs barking, children yelling, or a nearby fan blowing, visible background activity, and potential feedback from your microphone picking up the sound from your speakers. It is for this reason that we highly recommend the use of headphones. Thank you for watching. The meeting will begin at 7:00 PM, and if you would like to participate in public comment, raise your hands now, and do not put them down until called upon for public comment after the meeting has commenced.
Michael, can you hear me?
I can hear you, Walter.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Sorry, folks, I have to switch microphones in order for people to...
Okay.
Presentation.
You can hear me, though.
Yes, Walter, I can hear you just fine.
Terrific. Thank you, sir.
Hi, Mayor.
What's happening? Yeah, Mike.
Hey, Pete, you are peeking like crazy on your audio.
What do I need to do?
Could you either move further away from the microphone, maybe, or like, turn it down a little bit? Because it sounds like this to me.
Yeah, me too.
Is that better?
A little bit.
How about now?
That's better.
Okay.
I'm not going to make you fiddle around with it all night.
And then, Mike, when we're doing the for Stephanie, because we have a lot of people on here that are going to do participation, we can make sure they state their name and spell their first and last name, and then their residence. That'll be easier for Stephanie.
Since I have you here, Pete, do you want to have me just admit them as audio and then video upon request, as we've been doing?
Yeah.
Okay, so folks, when you get invited in for public participation, it will be audio only. If you'd like to request video, you may, and like I said in the instructional, I take my instructions from Pete, who's the mayor, and the sergeant-at-arms, who is Doug Skelly. So if they okay you for video, then I will let you through in video. I don't see any hands raised, folks. The way these meetings have been conducted is to try to replicate as close as we can the in-person style of meeting, which means that we don't do public participation on a rolling basis. So I see one hand. It is Pat Erickson. Pete, there's no way, because I'm the host, there's no way for me to raise my hand. So if you don't mind, I would love to go first. It should only take about 30 seconds. Doug, I did just send you an invitation to unmute if you've got something going on, and you don't need to unmute yourself, just said, if you don't feel like it.
Thank you.
Hi, Doug.
Good evening, all.
Just as a reminder to everybody who did not see the video, when you first come in, you can unmute yourself. I don't have any way to prevent you from doing that. If you could please refrain from doing so. I think you can come in with your video too, when you first come in, and there's no way for me to prevent that from happening. So if you guys, again, could just please refrain from doing that. If you guys would like to participate in public comment, just like at every town council meeting, you're limited to five minutes, and what you need to do in order to get called on is to raise your hand. That doesn't mean literally hold your hand to the camera. That means open up the Participants Panel, which is located at the bottom of your screen. So if you hover your mouse over the Zoom program, and then over Zoom screen, Zoom window, sorry. At the bottom, there'll be a button, an icon that says "Participants." Click on that, and it'll open the Participants Panel, and then you can raise your hand by either clicking the three dots and using the option to click your hand, or next to your name, I believe, there's still an option to raise your hand. So when we say "raise your hand," we mean in Zoom, not holding your hand up to the camera. I'll be taking Meredith, I got you. I will be taking a note of, right up until 7 o'clock, of who has their hands raised, got it in my notepad. I'll announce a roll call basically right before we start, so that Pete knows how many people and what order we have them in. So far, we've got five, including myself. You'll have to bear with us, because there's usually like a second or so of, we send you an invitation to speak, and then you have to accept that, so you'll have to just bear with us, because there is a second or so of transition through all of that. Also, if you would like to participate in public comment, raise your hand now. Do not lower your hand until we have called on you. That way, I know I can keep track of who wants to participate and who doesn't. Again, that floor is going to close at 7 o'clock when the meeting starts, just like we do in person. So get those hands raised if you want to participate in public comment.
Mike, is Stephanie doing the minutes tonight?
Yes, she is.
Want to say hello to Stephanie for me, please?
She can hear you.
Hello, Stephanie.
I miss you.
I miss you too, at my favorite place.
Hey, Katie, can you just ramble a sentence for me real quick? I think your microphone might be picking up too much.
And seven years ago, our fathers brought forth...
Okay, that's good enough. Let me see if we can...
And I'm not near it. I'm about two feet away.
Yeah. I heard an echo when you last spoke from Walter's phone, so I'm hoping that Zoom's able to... No, it sounds like it's coming from you. I'm hoping Zoom is able to account for that.
It's my natural tremolo.
Mary Jane, I had... Okay, there she is.
Hi, how's everybody?
Good evening.
Is that bad, or good?
Holy cow. Pete, I don't know what's wrong with your audio, man, but can anyone else chime in on this? I can barely understand him, because it sounds so much like this.
Say something, Pete.
Hello.
Oh, you're really muffled. I'm going to put my headphone on, Michael, and see if that helps.
Okay. All right, we are at 6:58. So, folks, oh my, that is much better, Katie.
Then anybody who has earbuds or a mic headset should do that.
I think she's subtly hinting at you, Pete.
Does he have some earbuds?
I do not.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
We're getting you for Christmas.
How exciting.
That's what everybody needs, Mary Jane, right? Everybody wants.
Okay, 6:59. This is basically going to be a last call here. I see Pat Erickson. I see Jafu. I see Joe Q. I see Meredith. I have my hand raised, because I don't have, as the host, I can't actually do that. I'm the one person who doesn't have that ability right now, and I'll be going first. I have Pat Erickson second, Joe Q. third, Jafu fourth, and Meredith fifth, in that order. So last chance, folks, before I hand it over to Pete, to get those hands raised if you want to participate in public comment.
And Mike, can we just remind everybody when they are at public participation, state their name, full name, and add...
Okay, I'll take care of that, Pete, because your audio stinks right now. So when you do get brought on for public comment, right away, before you start, say your full name. If there's any, if it's Jim Smith, you don't need to spell it out, but if there's some spelling out that needs to be done, do that, and please state your address as well, for the record, because Stephanie is doing this from home. Unmuted, I have, let's see. I could swear I had Greg in the meeting unmuted, and Stephanie's, of course, unmuted, and is Randy on here?
Yeah, he was.
He's muted.
Okay. Randy, I'm going to send you an invitation to unmute. Accept it when you feel like it.
Mike Crispin?
You want me to unmute him right now?
Early get to it, yeah.
All right, I'll keep M. Crispin. All right, I see that. All right.
Do you see Greg Asapow, Michael?
There he is. Okay, Greg, I'm going to send you an invitation to unmute. Accept it when you feel like unmuting.
So do we...
All right.
Chris Casgrove, Katie, Walter, Doug, and Mary Jane, is that it for council members?
Michael Gold could not make it, he told me, and I don't see him on here, so I guess he couldn't.
Okay, so last second here. Folks, if you guys are just joining in, if you guys could please refrain from, when you first come in, unmuting yourself and coming in with video, that would be, help with the clutter a little bit here, because when you first come in, it's possible for you to unmute yourself and for you to come in with video. So Pete, I got 7:01. If you want me to hand this off to you.
Okay. Mike, are you going to start first with public participation?
Do we normally start with a pledge?
Pledge.
Everyone can stand for the pledge?
I'm going to...
Could you...
Sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence for the men and women in the armed forces and our first responders.
Can we add Ruth Bader Ginsburg into that, too?
Absolutely, Mary Jane. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.
Okay.
Okay, so I have six who are here for public comment, if we're going to start with that. I have myself as first, then Pat Erickson, then Joe Q., and then Jafu, and then Meredith, and then Adele Connor. And those are the people that got their hands up in time for the meeting. Let me know, would you like me to start?
Do I have mine?
Okay, so this is just a matter of housekeeping for me. All right, so when I come to public comment, I'm trying to avoid doing this, folks, because of my professional capacity here as it relates to the position I volunteered here with, but so tonight, I'm going to be speaking entirely in my personal capacity. So by enormous popular request, I am, through the back end, streaming this onto Facebook. So if you guys are watching on Facebook, you will have to click on the Zoom link that's in the description of that video in order to join in on the Zoom meeting. This is a giant end around, so don't expect what you're seeing on Facebook now to be what you would expect to see if we were to do this in my professional capacity. As I'm monitoring the Zoom meeting, I can't monitor the live stream at all. So best of luck to myself, I guess, in that regard, and if you guys can't, if there's technical difficulties coming through, I have no way of doing anything about that, so apologize in advance. And if you want other people to see this on Facebook, if you want people to be able to participate in that respect, then go ahead and please share the video, and that's really all I have time to say. Thank you.
Michael, what's your address, please?
Oh, sorry, 19 Taylor Terrace.
Thank you.
Okay, so I have, up next is Pat Erickson. Pat, invitation unmuted, sent.
Good evening, Mayor and Town Council. I just wanted to share something with you that I overheard this past week, since everything has been very doom and gloom these days with COVID. I happened to talk to someone that's involved in law enforcement, and he was telling me he took a trip to Maine, and he was met there by many other members from different departments and different state police. And he said the topic of discussion that everybody was so impressed with was New Milford Police Department and the fact that they now have their own helicopter. And he said, "They were all so impressed by that," and he said, "How did you make it happen?" And I said, "We have a fantastic chief, a fantastic mayor, and a fantastic town council." So I just want to say thank you to each and every one of you. It's really great to have such positive feedback, and thank you very much for all you do. That's it.
Thanks, Beth.
Oh, I'm sorry, 65 Buckingham Road, New Milford, Connecticut. I'm sorry, Steph.
That's all right.
Okay, Joe Q., you are next. Invitation to unmute, sent.
Good evening, everyone. For the record, my name is Joe Coranta from 87 Boardman Road. I come before you tonight to discuss the right to farm. Recently, my wife and I have opened a farm stand at our farm at 87 Boardman Road. Due to a recent course of events, we have discovered that there is conflicts between the right-to-farm ordinance and our zoning regulations. We are formally requesting that the right-to-farm ordinance and the zoning regulations be amended and the necessary changes be voted on to include farm stands and the right-to-farm ordinance. Currently, all farmers will need to follow zoning regulations in order to legally operate their farm stands. We are requesting that the right-to-farm take precedence over any and all regulations set forth in zoning. Farm stands have played an integral role in the sustainability of our community for decades, especially this past year. Due to pandemic, recent storms, and food shortages, we have to do everything in our power to help our local agricultural communities succeed, as these farm stands are an integral part of our rural way of life. In speaking with the creators of the right-to-farm ordinance, the intent was to protect the local farmer, his operation, and the sale of his commodities. The ordinance was created in 2008, was amended in 2010 to include composting operations. My wife and I have recently started an online petition that currently has 1,575 local supporters. This petition is a clear indication that our community stands behind local agriculture, and they want to see the necessary changes be made. Because of this change to our charter, it would require a town meeting. This is a viable food source, and many of our residents are relying on farm stands for various reasons. Hopefully, this committee will agree that, given our current circumstances with COVID-19, that an executive order is appropriate for this simple change. Our hope is that after the necessary changes have been made, this governing body will leave us with a true right to farm. Blessings and thanks for your time.
Okay, sorry, folks, I'm just behind it. Joe, so Jafu, you are next. Sending you an invitation now.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good. Thank you. For the record, my name is Joe Hurley, H-U-R-L-E-Y. I'm from 105 Wellsville Avenue. I apologize for the J-A-P-H-U. I'll fix that sometime. My nieces and nephews have a great time.
We lost audio.
We lost Joe.
You don't have me?
Oh, there you are. You're back.
Okay, so I didn't want to start from the beginning. I won't bore you with the... With what I've just said. I just want to let you know, I sent you folks a...
We lost you again.
We lost them again. We want to go on to the next one and see if we can get them back.
Message. Can you hear me now?
We can hear you now.
Okay, I'll give it one last shot here. I sent you folks a message last week. I assume you've all gotten it about Sega Meadow and the towing.
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to get a response. What is the necessity of towing as opposed to ticketing? Does anybody have a response to that?
Not a Q and A.
Joe, just so you know, during public comment, it's the public that comments. We don't usually respond during this particular time. If you didn't receive any response to your email, we'll take a look at it and see why not, and see if we can get you something back. How's that? I don't know if you... Yes, you're there.
Give me a message back, but it didn't address that point.
Okay.
Okay.
I know I did, but I... No, you're right. I didn't. I think I said I would take it up with the mayor, and the mayor can take care of it.
Oh, the mayor did. Pete did send me a message. It just did not address that, which is... Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up in line is Meredith. If you guys could spare me for one second, just got to lower some hands and get some... All right, Adele, I actually did... Give me one second. Meredith, your invitation has been sent.
Good evening. I'm Meredith Coranta from 87 Boardman Road. And I raise my hand merely in case we have some technical difficulties tonight, so I don't need to speak. I feel as though, Joe, my husband, touched on all the points we are trying to bring forth tonight in front of the council. Thank you.
Okay, then. Last up is Adele Connor. You've been unmuted. Go ahead.
Good evening. Thank you so much for having us be able to offer a public comment. I'm here with my husband, Steven Neal. We're here really just to show our support for reconsideration of the zoning ordinance that has to do with... Which has to do with the law that is impacting the farm stands' full participation in selling goods to the community. Been a lot of discussion on it online this past week, and...
We lost her again. We lost her.
Part of the reason we came to the community through our roots, and we're hoping that, you know, take into account its direct effect on the farm stands. Can you all hear me?
Yeah, you cut out for a little bit, but you're back.
Sorry, my internet. Really, just to show support for a reconsideration of that one zoning ordinance, and to thank you for... Adele, can I get your address if you're still there? You live at 6 Santa Lane. Thank you. You're welcome, and thank you.
Okay, that's the end of the list, Pete.
Public participation. Next, we'll move to the consent agenda. I can't hear you, Katie.
Katie, you're unmuted or something. Still can't hear you.
Mike, can we help her out?
No, she's not.
I don't know what I can do from my end. It says that Zoom has her unmuted, so I don't know.
I'll make the motion to, with the consent agenda.
No, wait. David, I think we need to wait for Katie.
Oh, okay.
Nope, still can't hear you, Katie. Maybe take your earbuds out?
They're out.
Well, unplug them from the computer.
What is going on tonight? It's like staticky bad connection or what?
Katie, do you mind if I make the motion for the consent agenda?
Katie, can you call in with your phone?
Call in on your phone.
I think Mary Jane was right. There's some, something inside the computer tonight that's making everything a little haywire.
Yeah, Mike, even sometimes your sound is really staticky.
Interesting.
Okay, he's coming back. Still can't hear you, Katie.
Still can't hear you, Katie.
This is ridiculous.
Oh, we got you. We got you. We heard ridiculous.
We are ridiculous. I hear you.
Okay, so now, if you give me a minute, okay. I move to suspend the rules to add item 3C for our sustainability fund to item, to item number three. And also to remove item 10 on the agenda, which is also addressing sustainability fund because it's been moved up. If I could have a second?
Second. Any discussion on the motion? Over the motion?
Hi.
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 Okay, so now I move to accept items 3A, B, and C for the consent agenda. Item A is prior minutes. Item B is the tax collector refund of $60,763.19. And item 3C is just to advise the council that from our sustainability fund, a mini grant, whatever you want to call it, expenditure was given to a residential recipient and earmarked funds for the food bank were transferred to them for a total expenditure of the fund of $2,262.42.
Second.
Any discussion on the motion? Always in favor? I closed. Abstentions.
Okay, next item is Dr. Jeremy Levin. Is he with us tonight?
Dr. Levin will be at next, at our next meeting due to Rashashana.
Oh, right, okay. That goes to you then, Mayor. Item five, Mayor's remarks.
Yeah, I'm compor today. And that is the Mayor's updates. So just to give the council an update on our COVID numbers. I'm speaking with Mike Krespin today. These numbers are confirmed since the start, which was back in March. So this doesn't mean that everyone that's listed or the number you remember everyone is still COVID infected. These are just total numbers of state users for their metrics. State of Connecticut as of today is 54,743. Litchfield County is 1,777. That's up 13 from Friday. Hospitalizations still continue. As the governor, when he's looking at
I got a phone ringing.
County is again at zero, so that's great. New Milford is at 362, up two from Friday. We'd like to thank all our first responders, our medical staff, town employees, our volunteers, business community, nonprofits for their continued efforts as we continue to fight this virus. And with all of our efforts, we continue to bend the curve here in New Milford and can't thank everyone enough for that. Also, I'd like to thank Jeanne Ringberg and all of the women of the Daughters of the American Revolution and also the children, which is the CSCAR, for the military heroes banners that are now on the lampposts around the town green and area. And we'll be putting more of those up and it's just great to see and cannot thank them enough. Also, I'd like to thank everyone that was involved in the tank restoration.
I got a phone up.
Thank you for all of the volunteers. Also Veterans Bridge, Connecticut DOT. I spoke with them today. And the contractor scheduled to be doing nighttime work this week with the bridge closures and detours from 8:00 PM to 6:00 AM. If all goes well and weather permitting, it should be done with a night work at the end of this week or early next week, depending on weather. While the contractor will continue daytime work under the bridge, the surrounding area for fence and landscaping into November, there should be little to no impact on traffic, so that's good news. Also, Governor Lamont has issued Phase 3 in the reopening of Connecticut. And what Phase 3 means to us here in New Milford is does take effect on October 8. Restaurants, hair salon, barber shops, and personal service providers will be able to accept 75% capacity. It's 50% currently. Outdoor venues, including stadiums and concerts, can go up to 50% of capacity, up from 25, with mandatory masks and social distancing. Indoor performing arts venues can up to 50%. Indoor gatherings such as weddings and commercial venues can be up to half of the location's capacity to a maximum of 100 people. Outdoor private events with limits now of 100 people will move up to 150 people. Religious gatherings indoors can now be up to 50% capacity, capped at 200 people, up from 100. Outdoor religious gatherings and graduations can now have a number of people limited only by the capacity of the locations with distancing between groups. Indoor social gatherings at private residences are still limited to 25 people. The same is currently in Phase 2. From the Milford Fire Marshal's Office, there continues to be a no open burning policy of any kind in the town of New Milford. And this is due to the extreme dry conditions that we are experiencing. All burn permits have been suspended until further notice. As our Fire Marshal Kevin Reynolds reminds us, if you see any fire, please call 911 and report it. And any questions, you can call his office at 860-355-6099. Concerning our library construction, it continues. Currently, the contractor is working on the floor for the columns in the main section. They're also working on the hallway ceiling and they're demoing around the elevator at roof level. We'll continue to provide updates as we continue with the construction of the library and that's an 18-month process. Also, the library is having a Pokemon event from the 26th, which was this past weekend, up to the 4th. And you can come down and search for Pokemon, Children's Library, at 860-551-1191 and extension 05. Also, thank you to the New Milford troop 4034. The ladies are reminding us that we can still do the walk a mile for a meat, for a meal now through Saturday, October 3rd. Analysis of support to the Milford Bank is more important now than ever. If you get an opportunity, for those that haven't done this wonderful great thing to do for a great cause, you can check out the Facebook page for social services or the website for more information. Also, we have hired a municipal tax service and their name is MTS. And they are going to be auditing out of state car plates that live in New Milford. We're going to be checking those plates. If you have a permanent residency in New Milford, the mode of vehicle should be registered to the town. As we pay those who have cars registered here, those funds go to help run our town government, road construction, infrastructure, town operation. So they will be doing the audits of those state car plates. Katie, I'm sorry, I got one more thing and that's the roads themselves. And just for the council, so far with our road construction this year, we've completed McNulty, Old Parkwood, Polaris, Warwick, Shore, Forest, Grotto, List Hill, Wellsville, Eagle, Carmen Hill, Carmen Hill 1 and 2. Also, Geiger and Gardan, we just had to do some seeding and hailing left on it. Grandview Lane, grew the topsoil and hydrose. Long Mountain Road, completing the driveway, aprons and topsoil. Wampum, Indian and Arrowhead Place, we're continuing this. The Heacock and Crossbrook Road, we've done some catch basins, continuing to work and that road should be completed by November 1st. And the police department, we completed the driveway and the sidewalks and they're completing putting in the topsoil.
Item number six is a discussion on some possible action on the right to farm ordinance, New Milford's right to farm ordinance.
So I asked for this to be put on the agenda for a couple of reasons. The first reason is there's a lot of conjecture in social media, misinformation on social media. And we also had a a lot of residents asking about this particular firm. And we also had a petition that was meant to be public participation that had over 1,500 residents talk about. So first, I'd like to kind of give background to the town council and to the public that is listening today concerning the town itself, the town government, and its rich history in supporting farming. And so, as was stated a little bit earlier, the town has always been supportive of agriculture and continues to do so. The town brought so highly of farming that back in 2000, under Mayor Murphy, she moved forward with creating the Farmland Preservation Committee. And that Farmland Preservation Committee's mission was just protecting and preserving their surviving farmlands. So wonderful endeavor. And what have they done? And what has the town done? So it's done a host of things. First, it's preserved almost 280 acres across four family farms. They're also looking at a fourth with 70 acres pending. They created and succeeded in implementing New Milford's right to farm ordinance. And that was the first in Litchfield County and the second in the whole state of Connecticut. They also secured insertion of comprehensive section farmland farming in the current New Milford tenure plan of conservation and development. It underscores the importance of farming as an economic driver and rationale for municipal, state, federal investment counts farmland preservation. They work closely with USDA's Natural Resources Conservation Service, which is the NRCS, to officially identify New Milford's locally important farmland soils. We've been designated one of 24 municipalities approved by the Connecticut Department of Agriculture, the state's new community farms preservation program. This was designed to help preserve smaller family farms that is characteristic of the PDR program. They've organized, added a script to workshop for our farms on farmland preservation strategies. They've raised awareness of over 200 diverse area farms and artisan food producers by creating and distributing Who's Your Farmer?, which is a handy booklet. They designed and developed www新mifordfarmersmarket.com to highlight using a farmer's market on the green. That's a few of the things that a wonderful committee has and continues to do. And it shows our wonderful support for our farms. There's been a lot of conjecture that we don't support our farm stands. And there's a big differentiation in farm stands. And I'm going to ask Mike that you unmute our health director, Mike Krespin. And while you're doing that, some of the things that I want the public to be cognizant of and the town council is currently how our farm stands, the farmers markets are both led by guidance and by procedure. So one of the things is, for my own self, I would readily support our farmers and their right to farm and earn a living. As I'm sure you would agree, I also support the public's right to ensure that, when required, the town has taken the appropriate precautions to ensure the goods they're purchasing from farmers are safe to consume. As a mayor, I know that most times when a farmer chooses to have a farm stand, it requires little to town involvement. However, if a health complaint is made, we always have an obligation to investigate it and ensure the public safety is not in any way compromised. I can also assure you that the Health Department always attempts to work cooperatively when issue arises. In certain instances, we do not need to permit items from a health department perspective. We do need to permit. I will attempt to break down some of the more popular items so you can better understand when a health department does or does not need to involve. For vegetables and fruits, sales of these are, sales of these are, do not require Health Department sign off or permits. Fruits and vegetables that have been peeled, packaged, or modified from their natural state are no longer considered raw and would require a local Health Department license. Meat and cheese is raised on the property. Sale of meat from animals raised on the farm property can be served on site without Health Department involvement. There are two types of butcher. A, butchering in the USDA inspected facility with a USDA inspector on site while all the butchering is taking place. Then the farmer can sell any cuts of meat at their farm stand or farmer's market. Custom butchering. The farm raises the animal or poultry. A customer buys the entire animal or bird. The farmer may then butcher the animal for the customer that owns the animal or the bird. No portion of that animal may be sold to anyone else. The meat is for that customer's private use. USDA inspection is not required in this instance. Cheeses must be from a farm facility that is licensed by the Connecticut Department of Agriculture Dairy Division. Bears and meats, egg cheeses, just from another store. This is not allowed. Retail stores have separate license to retail sell meat and cheese. This actually falls under the Department of Consumer Protection. Licensing of retail establishments and for labeling of meat products, relabeling is not permitted. Every item sold at retail must be labeled to meet specs of the Department of Consumer Protection. Farm stands can only sell USDA slaughtered meat from a slaughterhouse, not from a distributor grocery store because farm stands do not have a retail license. They may sell their own meat or from another farm where the meat was butchered, processed, into different cuts of meat, prior of act and labeled with the farm's name, address. Sale of meat across lines, as noted above, farm stands cannot sell meat from a distributor because they do not have a retail license to do so. Connecticut does not have a state slaughter program, so there's no Connecticut. Ag inspectors inspecting slaughterhouses, only USDA inspectors. Baked goods. Sale of baked goods purchased in bulk and then packaged in individual portions is not permissible for farm stands. Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection licenses establishments that sell baked goods for commercial sale. The farm would have to bake the items from the ingredients that are grown on the farm, such as zucchini bread, pumpkin bread, apple pies. No Health Department requirement is required for these type of items and may be made in a farmhouse kitchen. Maple syrup. Sale of maple syrup does not require Health Department permit. Milk. To sell raw milk at a farm stand or a farmer's market, the farm must obtain a permit from CTAD. The farm must be inspected by the CTD or DOJ. The cows from their farm must be tested for certain bacteria. The milk must be used to make ice cream, yogurt, sauces, or special going through licensed security for pasteurization. The pasteurized product is given back to the farmer to add the flavoring. The Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection also licenses the farm stands that sell frozen desserts and inspects the stands. The local Health Department does not issue a permit. If a farm stand purchased milk from another farmer, he may not sell that milk unless he has a retail dairy store license. Another farm stand may sell milk or dairy from another farmer on their behalf the source of the dairy store owns the products and is being sold at another farm stand. Honey. The Health Department does not license farm stands to sell honey. The hives must be registered and inspected by the Connecticut Agricultural Experimentation Station. Eggs. Eggs produced from chicken on their farm sold at their farm stand or farmer's markets are exempt from having to grade and size shell eggs and are not required to put any weight on their cartons. Cartons must have the name and address of the farm. If using cartons that eggs were originally purchased from, from a grocery store, all the original information must be obliterated. The Health Department permit is not required. Jams, jellies made on site. Does not require a Health Department license. Jams and jellies also include vegetable jams. This is only for jams and jellies produced from the veggies and vegetables grown on their farm and also made by them. All available items is under the guidance and permitting of the Connecticut Department of Consumer Protection. The farmer may not sell at fairs or festivals. Products made in farmers' home kitchens, those would have to be prepared in a commercial kitchen, such as one at a local farm that has constructed. I trust if you have any additional questions or concerns, you can always reach out to me or you can reach out to Mike Krespin, our health director. One of the things that we have to be very, very cognizant of as well is the town, as the town council, and as a community. It'd be smirching our town very easily. Those with multi-decade experiences, that's wrong and that's not how we do business here in New Milford. If you have a disagreement or if you have a difference of opinion, that's what America's all about and what makes this country so great. If you have a disagreement or if you have a difference of opinion, that's what America's all about and what makes this country so great. But to besmirch someone with multi-year experiences is dead wrong, and that's not what we do. That's not what we're about. Uh, Mr. Cressman, would you, Mr. Cressman unmute?
Yes, I'm unmuted.
So Mike, um, there's been a lot of conjecture of the fact of you going to the Boardman Bridge Farmers Market. And could you expand a little bit about your experience at the farmers market?
Uh, you broke up a little bit there, Pete. Could you repeat that?
So Mike, there was a lot of conjecture on social media and a lot of misinformation as to your visit to the Boardman Farm Market or Farmers Market as it's portrayed on the social media site.
Yes, um, we received a complaint with some uh very uh strong concerns on my part. Uh, I felt an obligation to follow up. It was not represented. The complaint showed that this was not simple farm stand operations that were going on. Um, so we followed up with that. There was, there were pictures of meats hanging and there were pictures of baked goods that were out in the open.
And Mike, will you just hold on there? I'm going to share the screen. And on the screen, we will have the print that was sent.
Yeah. So, I mean, one of the, I think, big pieces of misinformation is that we have not, there's nothing has been changed as far as farm stands goes. There's, there's no, uh, there's, we have not been inspecting farm stands. There's been no regulation change or local policy change as far as farm stands. Uh, we visited, we visited the Boardman Road of Farmers Market um, as it, as the sign indicated, to gather information about what exactly was being done uh, in response to this complaint. So it was a, uh, an effort to try to gain uh information and to, and to find out what was being uh sold at this, at this farmers market. Uh, which, uh, as I say, and as you can see now on the screen, the, uh, the complaint alleged. So that was, that was the purpose of our visit there. We have, as I'll just repeat again, we have not made any visits to farm stands to, to uh the farmers that sell their fruits and vegetables uh whole. You know, that's the purpose of a farm stand. Uh, I, I grew up in Bloomfield, Connecticut. My father was a farmer. We had a farm stand. So I know what a farm stand is supposed to look like, and that was, that was in the fifties and sixties. But, but uh what was being alleged in this complaint uh was not, was not uh representative of a farm stand.
Thank you, Mike. And Randy, are you on the line? Mike, can you unmute?
Yes, I'm here.
I'm here. I'm here.
There's been a lot of conjecture that Mike had to do his job and would go down and talk to the owners of this uh, uh, Farmers Market. Uh, and there's a lot of conjecture that Mike trespass on someone's property.
Was it open for, was it open for business?
To our town council and to those who are listening, trespassing.
No, no. If it's open for business, it's open to the public and he has a right to be there. That's nonsense. That's just not law. If it's closed and he wants to go on the property, he has to ask permission. If they do not give consent, he has to get a search warrant. But the reality is that if he's open for business and anybody can access a store, he can too. And anything, anything he sees in plain view, he's allowed to report on. That's the law.
If you were to go and knock on the door, is that considered trespassing?
No, it's not considered trespass unless you knock on the door and somebody tells you to leave and you don't leave. Then it's trespass.
If you were to see somebody in the yard and go approach them, is that trespassing?
Of course not. That's the nature of human interaction.
Thank you. So Mike, I'm sorry to interrupt you. Uh, so if you could continue on, Mike, you are looking at items um that aren't compliant or, or items that could make you sick. Where would some of those items be that you would be worried about as our health director?
He's muted.
Mike, can you unmute? Mike?
I'm trying to unmute. Do you hear me now?
Yeah, I can.
Can you hear me now?
Yeah, good. Mike. Yes, we can hear you.
Okay. Yeah. So I think I mentioned, I mean, the pictures in the complaint show meat and they show baked goods. Uh, these are things as in your, in your um, in your summary, Mayor, uh, you talked about the various approvals that are needed for, for products. I mean, this is uh, with a lot of these, these products, that's very specific as to what you can do and can't do. So that was the purpose of the uh, of, of um, the visit to, to Boardman was to talk to the owner and to try to get some information about, about what was being done and what was being offered for sale. So that was the main purpose of the visit, to start a dialogue and to see if we could uh, you know, share information. We're always willing to help out with a, a business operator to, to guide them through the process. But, you know, we, in the past, before the complaint came, had not heard anything from this particular operator. So.
Mike, have you, to this day, have we ever um, shut down a farmer's farm stand or farmers farm stand, I guess, what we'll call it right now?
No, we, we, we don't do inspections of farm stands. And Suzanne Van Holt, who I have delegated uh in two thousand nine, she reminded me today uh, is our technical expert on all of these agricultural issues. She's on the committee, you know, that you mentioned, and is very on top of, of all of the agricultural products and, and the different activities surrounding farmers uh, uh, products and what they offer for sale. So, you know, I rely on Suzanne technically to, to wade through some of these individual uh items that, that farmers offer for sale if there's ever a, an issue with, with any of them. Um, Suzanne is involved in the New Milford Farmers Market, and she's done a great job with keeping up to date with the Department of Agriculture and the Department of Consumer Protection that oversees and regulates a lot of these products.
And Mike, you mentioned a real key word that I really like the council and the public to really focus on. And that's, as you just said, you're willing to work with any of the farmers to make sure that they can do what they need to do, but in a compliant manner that's safe for residents. Because especially during a COVID time like this, we don't want people going to hospital for foodborne illness.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, it's, it's all about food safety. That's, that's one of our responsibilities. That's, it's my obligation to ensure food safety for the residents of the town. I mean, it was, uh, we always take a cooperative approach. We listen to what people have to say. I always want to hear two sides of the story. That's something that I learned early on in my career with the town of New Milford, not to take a complaint on its face. So we were, we were there in a cooperative manner to try to obtain information and to work with this particular operator.
Mayor, I have a question. May I ask a question? Mike Cressman? Just, I'm just curious. I'm looking at this on the screen. Um, were these photographs part of the letter of complaint?
Yes, yes, they were. It was.
And are they? Okay, so I can't really tell from here, but anyway. So when you went there, did you see things like I'm looking at in these pictures?
No, we, we did not do an inspection because they weren't open at the time. So. Um, you know, I knocked on the door. We were, we were there, so I thought I would try to, try to have a conversation. We knocked on the door and then we, we, we went to the other side of the property and uh, and, and saw the operator and so, and decided to have a conversation with him, to try to have a conversation with him. And we, we had a, I thought it was a good conversation and I thought we had a, a way to move forward. And, and then uh, you know, that didn't, that didn't happen. Something, something else happened.
Oh, I see. Okay, thanks.
So I have a question to Mike.
Yeah.
So, um, you, so you didn't go in there, so you have not actually seen any meat or anything else being sold. How do you know these pictures are from there? Like, how can you prove that? And who made the complaint? I'd like to know who made the complaint. Is that public knowledge?
Well, it was an anonymous complaint. What you see on the screen is what's there. And, and you're right. I, I don't know that those pictures are, are accurate. But when somebody makes a complaint, that's what we do to investigate, is to try to see if it's valid or not. I didn't make the assumption.
Okay, so I think that's fine. My point is, is that why are we even discussing this if we don't even know these pictures are real?
Were they placed on the farm stand's Facebook page or something? That's why I was going to ask, is like, who, where did these pictures come from?
Well, that's, that's the allegation in the complaint, was that they were on the operator's Facebook page, yes.
Posted by Board, I can't really read all of it, but it looks like Boardman Bridge Farmers Market. Okay, so.
Yes, yes, that's the, those, those were.
But you never saw it with your own eyes. I just wanted to be clear on that.
No, that's right. These were, these were represented as screenshots from the, uh, you know, from the operation.
Thanks, Mike.
Okay.
So I don't know why we're discussing this like this. I, I just feel like we might be opening ourselves up to some legal issue here. Like, until we have more definitive information. And I have another question. So if, if somebody wants to have a farm stand, so just so I'm correct, because the, the audio was kind of, you know, wasn't great here. But um, so people could have their fruits and vegetables if they grew them right on their own property. Is that correct? But nothing else? They can't have beef or, you know, unless, and milk or whatever, unless it's all been approved. But they can have fruits and vegetables from their own property? Is that correct?
Yes.
There's also another component. So Mike has the health department component, then there's the zoning component. So when you go to the arm ordinance here, when you go to the zoning uh piece, let's see if I can pull that up. Uh, you can see where the parcel of land intended uh must contain at least three fourths, three quarters of an acre. So to have that, you have to have a, you know, to have a garden that you could uh, sell from a farm stand, you need three, three quarters of an acre.
So it sounds like, it sounds like, you know, they're asking to have that changed so that they can sell their fruits and vegetables. So is this something that we can change so that they, the farm stand, I mean, does it have to be three quarters of an acre? You can, you can grow a lot of, a lot of vegetables in a, in a small little plot with raised beds, so.
Hey Jane, a great question. Um, Mike never went down there for the vegetables. That was never an issue, about they put as many vegetables as they want in there from their garden. The issue that Mike came up to market, if I'm wrong, please correct me, was the fact that this um, this letter triggered that there are meats in there which aren't allowed. Uh, open cookies, those are things that aren't allowed in a farm stand. Uh, that are, that are definitely having to be uh, in a different way. Also triggered Mike to go down there, had nothing to do with vegetables. The farm stand, it was that. Am I correct, Mike?
Yeah, that's, that's correct.
Well, I go by there all the time. I mean, I did see that they were selling vegetables, but I, I mean, I never stopped to buy anything, but um, so apparently someone did see it. I, yeah, I, I don't see that there was anything wrong with the vegetable part. Looked like they were growing them in the garden.
Yeah, Pete, Pete, yeah. Well, I'm a little troubled by an anonymous complaint in the first place.
Yeah, me too.
I mean, that's, that's just problematic all the way around. Uh, we start a practice of that, you know, uh, I think that uh, we need to reexamine how we consider complaints. There's, I, just to speak tonight, uh, the public has to give their name and their address. And I would certainly hope that if you have a complaint, you could give your name and your address.
David, are you suggesting the health department doesn't follow up on anonymous, anonymous complaints?
Well, can, can I say a few words about that, you know?
I didn't, I didn't finish yet.
Oh, sorry.
And, and if, and if there is a name known and an address known, that's certainly reliable as well. Anyway, that's one thing. The other thing that concerns me is um, re-listening to the litany of what can be sold and canceled and permitted and owned and this, that, the other. Uh, it would seem to me that caused a few problems, particularly with the PTO here in town, holds many sales with many of the items you just mentioned. Uh, it also would conflict with Snack Shack that's at the high school on the football field and field hockey field and soccer field. Um, and I, I don't think that's what New Milford's about. We're not about, you know, coming down on a PTO, coming down on a farm stand. Uh, this is part of our community and, and this is what we do. And I, I, you know, with, with anonymous complaints, you know, we can go, I can make half a dozen tonight right after this meeting. And I don't think that's the way to go.
So Mike, can you address Councilman Lawson's concerns, sir?
Well, you know, first of all, uh, I've considered our response to anonymous complaints over the years. And I think that some complaints, because of the nature of them, rise to the level of, of deserving a, a follow-up. I mean, uh, you know, we get quite a few anonymous complaints that have to do with failing septic systems. You know, my, is the health department supposed to just ignore that there might be sewage flowing in the street? Uh, you know, that's an extreme example, but I think the answer to that is no. And that's the approach that I've taken, you know, and I, I disagree with your characterization that there was some sort of a coming down hard on someone. Uh, you know, maybe, you know, I don't know if the operator in this case took it that way. I wouldn't, you know, this, but to me, it was a conversation that we had and uh, we're just trying to gather information and ask some questions. Uh, it wasn't, it wasn't a heated exchange at all. It wasn't a confrontational exchange at all, in my mind. And I mean, we start by asking questions and we do, and we do an investigation uh, based on, based on the nature of the complaint. And I didn't, I didn't, I, I don't think, uh, you know, actually, I, I, you know, I don't think it's proper for the health department to ignore uh, any complaint, anonymous. I, I agree with you that somebody that puts their name to a complaint, uh, it might, it might have a higher priority. It has a greater legitimacy associated with it. I agree with that. But I also don't think it's proper to, to discount uh, an anonymous complaint. I mean, there's a lot of reasons why people don't want to put their name to something. Uh, I think we're, we're fair-minded and I think that we're able to weigh the importance of a complaint and whether or not it goes to, to health and safety issues that uh, you know, that, that could, that could occur as a result of ignoring it. I mean, where, where, I, I probably would find myself in front of the town council for disciplinary action if I said, oh, I'm not going to look at, I'm not going to look at this or that or something else that, that has a, that has a health and safety, that has a potential health and safety impact on the town. So, you know, if you, if, uh, that's my view on it. I don't think it's proper for the, for us to, to ignore a complaint. And that's, we haven't done that for, for years. We address, we, we look at complaints that are uh, that are presented to us either, either on the phone or, 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 or in writing.
Oh, certainly. No, I understand the health and safety of it. There's no question about it. It's not just your agency, but any agency operating under anon- It's not just your agency, but any agency operating under anonymous, this, that, and the other. Now granted, with the police, they ask for anonymous tips, okay? On, but they actually endorse that. But, uh, so what is it with bake sales and things like that? Are these now illegal? Are these illegal as well?
I mean, I don't even think that's part of the topic here, is it?
Well, I just heard a whole litany of baked bush and meats and this, that.
Right, but it's during the, since the COVID virus began sampling and selling things, they're not, that's not being done by anybody the way it used to be. But I just have a question. This, these pictures were on the website of the farm stand. So, I mean, you can't fake that. I, I mean, I say, looked exact, I could see it was, you know, what it said at the top of them. I can hardly see the writing. But if somebody was advertising, you know, if someone didn't think it was wrong and that's something they were selling, so they advertised that they have it there for people to buy, that's one thing. But I, I think, uh, what really bothers me is of all the people I know in the health business or any business, Mike Cressman is about the least threatening pushy person I've ever known. So I find it hard to believe that you were harassing somebody and that I think I take a little issue with too. As far as the semantics of what he can sell, there is an ordinance, so that really shouldn't even be debated. We have it here. You can look at it and it, I thought we were gonna discuss potentially amending something in the future if that's the case. But according to what I heard, I don't see that there's any reason to amend it. There's all these regulations cover just about anything you want, like the mayor said, vegetables. Nobody said anything about his vegetables. It's not a meat market, so take the meat away and go back to what you were doing. I don't understand the problem.
Mr. Mayor, may I ask a question, please?
Yes, I'm in Mike's name.
What, what kind of possible action are we looking for on this right to farm ordinance? I don't see a problem if you got a farm stand selling fruits and vegetables. I don't know what we're arguing about here.
Walter, I don't, I don't, I, I think that that's the intent of these farmers' farm stands. It's in their, it's in the regulations that they could sell their, their vegetables in their farm stand, which is what we want, which is part of the whole thing. You know, as we continue to kind of go through some of this other, other council people, I mean, that's something that we can entertain.
Yeah, I have a question.
Are we putting this in the form of a motion then, sir?
I have a question, real quick. So, um, the right to farm, I think the ordinance states that exempts farm stands. I think the, it, the issue for the zoning part is they wanna add farm stands to the ordinance of right to farm. That's more of a zoning issue than a health issue. So I think that's, that's something that we might wanna put on the table is adding farm stands to the right to, right to farm for zoning issue.
Do you opine on farm stands and in the regulations how they would want it as it pertains to right to farm? Would that in any way be at opposite sides of zoning?
It is absolutely a zoning issue. So zoning in Connecticut is the exclusive agency that deals with use of, uh, land use on property. It's a zoning issue as far as whether the U should be allowed. And this town council, no offense, town council has no jurisdiction over that. It's a land use issue. And, and I think it comes up with a, with a, a, a request for the zoning commission, a request for the, the planning commission to pass on whether or not that should be. And then it's a public hearing and then they vote on, uh, uh, amending the regulation. That's the proper way to do it.
Randy, just to be, just to be clear then, we have no authority to add farm stands to right to farm ordinance?
No, it's a, it's a zoning issue because if you take a look at this, the agricultural uses are in section 025 dash 1050 of the zoning ordinance.
So that would be something that would have to be resolved at the zoning.
Exactly. It's, it's a legislative act of the zoning commission.
And didn't we have, uh, about a year ago or maybe more, quite a long and laborious process for a farmer who has cows, raises them and et cetera, et cetera, and wanted to have a slaughterhouse on the property? And because of the product, it required a lot of special attention because of the health and safety. So I'm, I'm, I know that this doesn't involve slaughtering anything, but I, I think, like anything, it needs to be refrigerated or especially contained or, I mean, I, where, I know there's a chain of command or possession rather with animals. So I don't know, is that the kind of thing that could be, uh, where would I go if I wanted to do that?
USDA, USDA regulations.
Well, no, no, I mean, so if, if I'm the farm stand owner and I wanna sell salami, so how do I do that in New Milford? That's a question I'd ask.
So Katie, what you would do then is you would then set up a retail store, just like retailers do up and down Route 7. You'd set up a retail store.
Okay.
And resell meats, see where you don't do yourself.
I see. So the farm stands are sort of exempt from having to go through the, the, all the McGill of retail business because those are individual, mostly family onsite garden people selling, right?
Right, and.
I just want people who are listening to this to understand that, know that this is really, that there are processes and it's not been ignored all these years that New Milford's been in farming and we've had farm stands.
And again, we can't emphasize enough that we want farm stands. We want, uh, that sustainable food. As a farmer, you can sell all the vegetables you want on your, on your farm stand. You sell the vegetables in your garden. This is not what triggered Mr. Cressman to go there. That was the other items that were there. And as we're continuing to talk about the right to farm, you can see the agricultural uses that are done from zoning as Attorney DeBella talked about. Uh, and there again, it talks about the fact even in here is that you can sell farm and garden produce, they're permitted.
Pete, I just have one question for Mike. What, just tell me an overview of what a, a serve, uh, serve licenses, a serve sale license.
Safe serve you're talking about?
I'm sorry, safe serve, safe serve license. What is exactly is that?
Oh, I know.
Well, the, the, the serve safe license is, uh, normally some, a, a restaurant operator that wants to have trained employees that are knowledgeable in health and sanitation, food temperatures, how to clean and sanitize, uh, proper cooking temperatures, all of those issues that normally revolve around food preparation, food storage and preparation. The, there, there's part of the food service regulations for the state of Connecticut are that you have to have a food protection manager. The, the term keeps changing, but essentially what it is, is a supervisory person at a food operation, you know, food preparation. I'm talking about the traditional ones now, the restaurants, uh, both.
The doughnuts that fair days has, we have to have, for rotary, we have to have somebody whose food served, food safe or whatever it is, a graduate of the program in order to have the fried dough, hot dogs and hamburgers.
Right, so it, it's, it's, to put it in simple terms, is just a, an individual that is supposed to have some supervisory responsibilities to oversee the safe food preparation and storage.
So Mike, my question to you is if, if a farm stand had a serve safe license, would that, would that be okay to sell other items?
Well, a, a farm stand operator doesn't even need a serve safe, uh, you know, certificate because there's no preparation involved. That's the idea. A, 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 a farm stand is, is selling the, the raw fruits and vegetables. They're not cut, they're not prepared, they're not changed in any way. They're pulling the corn, uh, the, the, the corn cob off of the stalk and offering it for sale. So there's no, in that situation at a farm stand, there's no serve safe certificate required for any, any person.
But if they had it, could they sell baked goods?
No, because you also need to have, you also need to have a baked, a baking license. A, a commercial kitchen and Suzanne is here in the room, uh, you know, helping me because this is the area where, where Suzanne has greater expertise. So in, in that situation and for, you need a bakery license, which you have, which you obtain from the Department of Consumer Protection.
So you would need multiple licenses to serve baked goods and so forth and meats?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move the issue to zoning and call the question, please.
I, I have another question. I, I just wanna come back to.
I'll take a second to call in the question.
No, we're not ready to call the question. Could you just hold off, please?
I don't know about that. If this is a zoning issue, send it to zoning. I'd like to call the issue, please. I'll take a second.
If I could be, you know, if I could ask another question, Pete?
Walter, can we have Mary Jane just ask a question? And then, and then we'll, we'll take that, we'll take the, um, a motion if someone wants. Mary Jane?
So I just, I just wanna come back to the, to Mike about, so Mike, you didn't, did you go back and do a second inspection? And did you see meats or dairy products or anything else at this farm stand? Or did you just see fruits and vegetables?
No, well, we had not seen anything because the way we left it that day, it was a, it was a two Thursdays ago in the afternoon, was that, was that the operator was gonna get back to us and set up a time for us to come and inspect. And then that never happened.
Okay.
That was my, that was my understanding was, and, and that's what, you know, that's what was said.
They haven't been, they haven't been shut down?
I, I, I believe they stopped operating for one reason or another. I don't know exactly what it was.
But not due, not due to you?
Not, you know, we didn't issue any orders or any notices of violation or any orders to close, no.
Okay.
So why did you not call them back? Did you call them back to go back and do a second visit?
There, there was a conversation that, that day and we, we were asked to come back and I, I did not have time that day. And then, and then it, it got into this whole flurry of, of social media stuff and, and it just, it didn't happen. So.
All right. So in other words, you didn't see anything. So you didn't see meats or anything there? Nothing?
No, we weren't, we weren't, we weren't allowed to come back, no.
Well, it wasn't that you weren't allowed to come back, but he, you just, nobody made arrangements.
Well, I think on Facebook, Mary Jane, they said that they were being harassed and he shut down on his own. So, you know, yes, they weren't invited to come back, but it was made known that they were supposedly harassing him. So he didn't come back. The next thing you know, it was in social media.
Okay, well, I don't know. I think this is kind of sad that this whole thing is playing out in public like this, but.
I agree.
Yeah, it should've never went on social media.
You know, um, and, and I mean that we're even discussing all this stuff on town council meeting. I don't know. I think it's almost inappropriate.
So I think there were plenty of people in the, in the public though, Mary Jane, based on the people that attended and still are listening and watching the video and everything, that there are a lot of people who wanted answers to some of these questions. And I don't think there's anything wrong. I, I mean, I'm trying not to mention anybody in particular. I just, I, I wanna, that's why I asked the questions I did. I think it's important that everybody understand what our, our rules and regulations are because, you know, for all the 300 and some years, this town has been known for being farm friendly and preserving it, et cetera, et cetera. So I personally didn't wanna hear that somebody thought that we weren't farm friendly by a way of a petition, which I didn't see, but.
I, I guess what I'm, I think what I'm worried about is that there might be some legal implications and maybe things that people have been saying on the town council maybe shouldn't have been said. I'm not sure. But it's just my thoughts.
Mr. Mayor, again, I would like to call the question, please.
We don't really have a motion so much. Oh, I guess there was a motion to discuss it and see if, and I think you're right, Walter, that it would mean that it depends on what the council decides where it should go.
Send it to zoning then, and let's move on, please.
I agree with Walter.
The council wants to take no action?
Hopefully we can listen.
I mean, Pete, we have this, the, uh, farming ordinance, but there's no specific things that they even asked to change. It was just, they wanted to discuss it. Well, it's here. If there's specific changes people wanted, want, you know, then it goes through zoning and then maybe comes with the answer, but we need to hear what specific changes we want.
And according to Mr. DeBella, County Attorney DeBella, this is a zoning issue. So we'll send a, a letter to zoning and let them know. Uh, and then also I know Mike, uh, has offered, the town has offered and our zoning has offered. We'd be glad to meet the contractor at any time to help work through this as we said before. So we wanna make sure everybody that wants to sell their vegetables or do, uh, for our residents, especially in farming, we would love to do that.
I, I agree. I think we should clear this mess up this week and, and move on. I agree.
Okay, so no action will be taken? No vote's gonna be taken, right?
There's no motion.
Right. So I just wanna say that for the record stuff.
I'm just going to send a letter to zoning to let them know the town council, uh, have reviewed this and wants zoning to take a look, cause that's where this needs to go.
Okay. Are we ready to move to the next item?
Yes.
Okay, item number seven is a, a motion to allow the mayor on behalf of the town to take, uh, action in, on a federal fiscal year 2018 Homeland Security grant. And I believe Tammy Reardon Grant Specialist is here.
Is there a second?
Second.
Tammy here.
Mike, you and you, Tammy.
Good evening, everybody.
Hi, Tammy.
My apologies for the typo on that. It's actually federal fiscal year 2020.
I thought.
It is the Homeland Security Grant Program. Um, and what this does is it allows property to be stored within, exchanged and used as necessary within Demus Region 5. It's an annual authorization. We did one in 2019 as well as in 2018. There is no change to the existing resolution that you're looking in.
Okay. All right. So it's a resolution and we have a motion in a second. So let me read it in.
Hi.
Hi.
Mayor, would you like me to read this into the record? Okay, uh, so resolve that the town of New Milford may enter into with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection, Division of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate. And it is further resolved that Pete Bass, as mayor of the town of New Milford, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the town of New Milford and to do so and perform all acts and things which he deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents, including, but not limited to, executing and delivering all agreements and documents contemplated by such documents.
That's it.
That's it. So, uh, item 7B, uh, again, will be for Tammy. This will be a motion, uh, that we, uh, allow the mayor to be authorized to sign and apply for a Department of Economic and Community Development, uh, through SHPO, the Historic Fund, a grant through them.
Second.
Tammy?
Thank you. Uh, some of you may have been on the council in 2018 when a motion was passed to make the application to SHPO's Historic Restoration Fund Grant. That motion did pass. At the time, it was up to $100,000 of assistance towards restoring what at was on the town hall roofing material. Historically was a, um, raised seam metal roof. So just as that application was being prepared, the state historic preservation office had a change in staff and they suspended the program. So the funding was put in place shortly beforehand. So this goes back to 2018. So the funding, I believe, was put in place in the bond package, mayor of 2019, if I remember correctly. And the state has just recently reopened this program. During that time, the mayor has established the municipal building committee. The municipal building committee has taken this up, used the assistance of Silver Petraselli to do a very thorough inspection and recommendation, um, to the building committee. to the building committee, which is coming to you at option two. If you took a look at the roof report I provided, it is, uh, approximately $883,466. Your authorization for the mayor to make this application and execute the documents will allow us the opportunity to be awarded up to $100,000 towards that cost.
Okay. Would you like me to read it?
I think Chris has a question.
Actually not a question, just a comment. So I'd like to, uh, thank the, the building committee for the work they've been doing here and, and everywhere else. And this report is, is terrific. I mean, very detailed and I really appreciate, uh, them doing that and just, just a great job. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, actually it deals with grants. Uh, we authorized the, uh, application for the sidewalk grants several months back. I was wondering what the status was on that.
Can we do this first and then I'll have Tammy answer you, Dave? Is that okay?
Yep.
Okay. So, uh, here you go. Be it resolved that Pete Bass, mayor of the town of New Milford, is authorized to sign and apply for the Department of Economic and Community Development, State Historic Preservation Office Historic Restoration Fund for assistance with the replacement and repair of the Roger Sherman Town Hall roof, gutters and fascia on behalf of the town. Additionally, Mayor Bass is empowered to execute and deliver in the name of and on behalf of this corporation, a certain contract with the state of Connecticut, Department of Economic and Community Development, and to affix the corporate seal as requested. Walter did the second. I made the motion. Walter seconded.
Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
I.
And Tammy, can you, um, uh, update Councilman Lawson on the sidewalks?
Okay, um, sure. Councilman Lawson, can you refresh my memory which sidewalks you're referring to?
Uh, well, actually all of them, quite frankly, um, the ones that were to be on Route Seven.
Okay. The, the Route Seven sidewalk project, um, is a very extensive project. It is a significant amount of funding. However, there is an additional outlay by the town. And you will recall this goes back prior to my position as grant writer. So it is federal dollars being passed down through the state. The sections along Route Seven that were proposed in the grant application that was done prior to me being the grant writer for the town came into question when the project was brought forward to the council. There was much debate and consideration as to the location of the sidewalks, the maintenance of the sidewalks in terms of cost and many other topics. So in going through the process that is very, um, very strictly followed by the state's consultant, the town of New Milford and the mayor have reached an agreement, um, for the man and work hours, which provided us a cost estimate. The mayor's requirement to move forward because this is such a longstanding issue, the topic of sidewalks on Route Seven has been talked about for 20 or 25 years at least. Most recently, our history with incidents involving vehicles and pedestrian has seemed to have increased over the past few years. So the mayor negotiated a public information meeting to be provided by the contractor that was chosen, which was Beta Consultants. That was just about, um, ready to start being put together when COVID-19 and the public meeting restrictions were put into place for gathering inside. Trying to provide the best information available to the residents. I consulted the mayor several times over the summer and it was, we were trying to hold off until we could have a public meeting, basically, because the topic is going to be very, you know, widely sought after in terms of the information. But because of the nature of, of COVID-19 and the continuance of this pandemic, as well as some pressure from the federal government to move this grant forward, the mayor and Beta, our public works director, and I believe our IT department are all working together to provide a public information meeting in late October. The information should be provided by Beta prior to the meeting with a very specific format for public virtual attendees to, um, review the information in time to ask questions ahead of time. It will be, um, held virtually. It will be recorded. The information will be available after the meeting. So that is currently where that project is.
Okay. Uh, two other things. Does the delay jeopardize the funding? The grant, I should say.
It hasn't to date, but I do have some concerns over it because of the construction and the construction seasons that were limited to here in Connecticut. However, with the COVID pandemic and the required steps for us to follow through with this grant and the project, I don't see that we wouldn't be able to get an extension if one were needed.
Okay. And the other question is, uh, you asked me about which sidewalks and I said, well, both of them. So what's the status on the Pettibone sidewalk?
The Pettibone sidewalks, those are required to be installed by our zoning approval. We have approximately half of the funding necessary for the construction in a grant. We had received a grant for $210,000 towards that construction. The budget that was put together for the construction, um, at that scope of work to the degree that zoning is requiring, the budget, I, I don't know why it was only put out at $210,000. Our engineers are looking at it and to construct that scope of work, the cost will be almost double. So the mayor and public works and I have been in conversations. I believe, mayor, if you want to talk a little bit about some of your concerns.
So, Dave, when the engineers, uh, were looking at finalizing everything, they came out with another bid, which is almost double. So we're working with Jack Healy, now the DPW director, see about ways of getting the cost, uh, reduced so that we can get the sidewalks put in. So that's what we're doing now as DPW.
Uh, really quickly, would the landfill settlement cover any of that fund?
Um, I could check. Let me check and find out about that, Dave.
Yeah, I know it's for educational and, you know, public parks uses. So, um, yeah, I, I think that'd be a prudent thing to do because this, again, both of these have been years in the waiting. And, uh, as Tammy indicated, you know, the accidents have only been continuing. And, uh, that puts a heck of a burden on our police department. So. Okay. Well, thank you very much, Tammy.
You're welcome.
Good for Tammy. Um, what is the, um, the timeframe to use the grant, um, for the sidewalks? Do we have, is there an end date? Like if we don't do it by a certain date, we're going to lose that, the grant money?
I don't have those documents in front of me, but if I call correctly, um, it's 2022 for both of those projects.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And COVID will be gone by then.
Let's hope.
Okay. So are we done? Okay. Item number eight.
Thank you, council.
Thank you, Tammy. Uh, motion to approve a request from New Milford Fitness and Aquatic Center asking, uh, for road, requesting road closure of Pickett District Road over to Dodd Road for their five K road race, which would be held on November 8th from 8:30 to 9:30 a.m.
Second.
Thank you.
Do you want me to comment?
Yeah.
Um, so I've, I've, I've gone through the, uh, the, um, authority and I've talked to the health department. So my idea for road race is starting in front of Petco and using the parking lot as a grid system to separate the people and doing six at a time across the line. Go out of the parking lot, take a right down. Erickson and, uh, not Erickson, um, Dodd and left on Pickett District. We'll loop around Pettibone and head back. Um, I'm meeting with the chief of police tomorrow to go over the, you know, the final plan. But that's our plan. We're just trying to get a little bit of semblance of normalcy back to the world in a safe manner. So if you have any questions, let me know.
We have a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Hi.
Same.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you. Um, mayor, I'm going to, uh, do you want, uh, we have next on item nine, uh, a monthly update from, uh, Karen Pollard, Economic Development. And we also have the tax deferral applications. Can we do the applications first? If there's somebody listening into this meeting who's interested to know about this, or do you want to do that second?
We can do those if it's the pleasure of the, of the council to do it for us. Sure.
Sure. Go ahead.
Oh, okay. So, um, for item nine B, I'd like to move that we accept the tax deferral applications from nine B, item one, which is Z and Z Real Estate LLC, which is the Sunoco Gas Station on 291 Danbury Road. And, uh, nine B two, which is K and L Asian Corp Yokohama Restaurant on 254 Danbury Road. And council had a lot of documentation, uh, from, uh, both the assessor and the economic development about this. So that's, that's the total motion.
Second.
A second from Walter. Any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor?
Hi. Hi.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you.
Okay. So now, update. Karen with us?
Mike, can you unmute Karen Pollard, please?
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me?
We can.
Can hear you, Karen.
Wonderful. Thank you for taking care of those tax abatements first. Um, and now I have a quick update. So September has been extremely busy. Uh, the transition from summer into fall has, uh, given us a lot of changes in the business community. I continue to work very closely, one-on-one with businesses as they adapt to a longer term dealing with COVID, the restrictions, financial implications. And also now, as the mayor has already mentioned, we are about to go into phase three for October. But phase three doesn't look like we thought it would back in May and June. There are numerous changes to the ordinances or to the requirements that the state is putting forward. Uh, the mayor and I earlier tonight at 6:00 p.m. held a Q and A session in order to discuss with businesses what their questions or concerns might be. We had multiple folks attend that, uh, meeting, uh, but the questions were really minor. I think at this point, everyone has been reading the, the information and the rules coming from Economic Development at the state and the governor's office. And, uh, most of the specific questions involve interpretation of specific rules as it relates to their business. So once again, one-on-one information, uh, asking questions, getting the information back, just making sure everybody is clear on how to keep customers and employees safe going forward. Um, we continue to see an increasing and noticeable amount of new, uh, businesses and companies and residents looking at New Milford as an opportunity for them and their families. Number one, industrial and commercial development on Route Seven continues to be strong. Uh, lots of interest. And, uh, again, we have minimal existing space available. Uh, most of what we have available is retail space, which has been interesting, but, um, difficult to get people to make the actual decision. Um, we, I am working with Advanced CT and the Department of Community and Economic Development at the state on multiple industrial, uh, interest. Uh, though, one of those has, uh, recently decided to look outside of Connecticut. Another one is still looking at locations inside Connecticut, of which we are one of four contenders. Uh, the second area of interest has been riverfront ground field areas and also, um, multifamily residential. So far, not the, um, but nobody has actually pulled the trigger, but we are certainly working with the information from the bar grant committee and, uh, trying to gather promotional materials for those riverfront areas that we want to see redeveloped, take priority in other people's minds. Um, we are continuing to deal with individual property owner or individual business owners on outdoor dining, outdoor display, entertainment and holiday events, which again, phase three will allow us to hold multiple holiday events with a little greater population. But again, now we're at this point in the year, we're going to be dealing mostly with residents, both existing and new residents in entertainment and holiday. Communication has continued to be a top priority. Uh, there will be a webinar this coming Wednesday hosted by Connecticut Main Street where, um, New Milford will be featured as the case study for the crisis to recovery discussion. In New Milford, we have had four businesses closed permanently due to COVID. None during September. There have been no new closure announcements. Uh, and we have seen multiple businesses expand and multiple new businesses. Uh, I will mention a few. Scooter Bar and Grill is the former First and Ten. They opened last Sunday. Uh, Yokohama, uh, as you just, uh, saw their plans, they will be opening in just a few weeks in their new, new location on Danbury Road. There are new proposed buildings in town, including a retail storage building on Kent Road. And the new warehouse for Mountain High Organics will be also receiving their CO in the coming weeks. For long-term discussions, long-term recovery is now, uh, the town is required to have a local committee on long-term recovery and both the Economic Development Commission and the Economic Development Corporation are fully engaged and prepared to be part of those discussions. Again, the, obviously, uh, an important part of those long-term recovery discussions revolve around health and well-being of our community, but the economy in our town is also critically important. And so both organizations are prepared and ready to be part of those discussions. Also, Sustainable Connecticut will rise to a much higher, uh, profile during the month of October coming, coming at us here in a couple of days. Um, there will be multiple presentations to the zoning commission, the planning commission, economic development regarding our new application for sustainable CT that will achieve silver status certification for New Milford. And of course, I'm always happy to take any, uh, questions that you may have.
Karen. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
Thank you. Uh, item 10 was removed. We go to item 11, which is, uh, discussion, um, regarding an additional appropriation for the Candlewood Lake Authority. And mayor, you sent us some documents?
Yes. Mike, um, could you, uh, Mark Tucson? And I'm gonna see if there's anybody else from Candlewood Lake.
Pete, I didn't get that first name. Which name was that first one?
He's right in the front there.
I think you said Steve Klug.
Mark Tucson.
And Mark Tucson, both of them?
All right. I've sent out, uh, messages or invitations to unmute to both you guys.
Steve, is there anybody else besides you and Mark that have joined tonight?
Mary. Let's see.
Marion Gaffey? Mike, can you?
Invitation sent.
There she is.
Are you unmuted?
And Joan Archer.
Okay. Uh, if Joan Archer is in the stream, could you raise your hand? I'm trying to find you.
She's there next to Nancy.
Second page.
Second page, Mike. Third box down on the end.
Keep going.
And Nick Malice.
A lot of people to talk about those votes.
Marion, are you going to start everything off?
Um, Joan is going to start it off.
Okay.
And did we get Nick Malice on here too?
I see his name on.
He needs to be unmuted also, please.
Mike?
Okay, there he is, okay.
Yep, and Mark Tucson, too.
I've already sent him three or four invitations. I'll try again.
Thank you.
All right. Good evening, everyone. My name is Joan Archer. I'm a delegate for the Candlewood Lake Authority from the town of New Fairfield. Joining me tonight are the three delegates from New Milford, Mark, Steve, and Joe, and you've already heard from Mary Ann, and Nick Malice is the Assistant Chief of Patrol. Not joining us tonight is Mark Howard, our executive director. He's on the road right now and will normally be speaking to you tonight, but yes. So I would like to share my screen. Is that possible?
Yes. Mike, you allow Joan to share her screen?
I'm gonna make her a co-host if you don't mind. I think she can do it from there.
You see an icon at the bottom, Joan?
Yep, we're good. Can you guys see this?
Yep.
All right, perfect. All right, so, let me, do you present? Okay, I'm gonna dive right in. So the reason we're here tonight is that the summer of 2020 was the summer of COVID. COVID-related closures in area recreational areas created a lot of traffic on Candlewood Lake this summer. We saw an increase in traffic on weekdays. We saw an increase, a heavy increase in traffic on the islands that caused a lot of trash and unsanitary conditions. We saw an increase in transients and also an increase in people who were just new to the lake and unaware of various hazards. Also, due to COVID, we had to run four patrol boats at a time to socially distance the patrol officers. This created a great deal of wear and tear on the boats, and as a result, we lost two boats this summer. Skipping ahead, the role of CLA Marine Patrol, in case you are not aware, they enforce Connecticut boating law, but in addition to that, they also educate boaters on safe boating. They respond to accidents. They perform safety checks. They assist disabled watercraft, which means they often wind up towing vessels. There's no more sea tow on the lake, so this often winds up the responsibility of Marine Patrol. They also assist law enforcement, fire and EMS units on emergencies. They collaborate with DEEP on special operations, and they remove hazardous debris. In 2020, Marine Patrol was called for service over 600 times. This number is very underreported. It doesn't include many calls where there were no infractions and various safety checks. In 2020, there were 13 boating accidents. This is an increase of almost triple from 2019. In 2019, there were five boating accidents. In 2020, of the 13, four had injuries and nine were property damage. The Marine Patrol response, you know, we underestimate the role that they play in law enforcement in our community and the critical role they play in responding to emergencies. One anecdote that was spread on social media in 2019, the patrol risked their lives in the middle of a severe lightning storm to save two people on a disabled jet ski at night. The CLA officers got the two individuals to shore where the Danbury Fire Department and EMS units were waiting. So going into 2020 summer, this was the patrol fleet that we had. On the upper left here is the 2017 Raballo. This was purchased through a grant through the town of Sherman. In the, to the right here, on the upper right, is the 1999 Aqua Sport that was purchased in the spring of 2020 as a used boat in response to COVID because we knew we were going to need an extra patrol boat. And then going on the bottom left, the 1997 McKee, both the hull and the motor failed this summer. On the bottom right, the 1993 Steiger, that used to be, that was the environmental boat for the Lake Authority, but because we needed a patrol boat, we converted it to a patrol boat for this summer, and the hull failed, and we are taking the engine from that and moving it to the barge boat, the one that sets the buoys. Moving ahead, so looking at 2021, the CLA needs a minimum of three dedicated patrol boats to provide adequate safety. We have, we would like to move the 1999 Aqua Sport to the environmental work boat, and then we have the 2017 Raballo, but we are looking to purchase two new patrol boats for next summer. We started looking at different options. Lake Lilinona recently purchased a Metal Shark. This has an aluminum hull, and it's a commercial-purpose vessel. They gave great reviews of this boat. Many of the local departments have moved to aluminum hull and commercial purpose because the fiberglass has not been holding up with the change in usage on the lake recently. The other option is the Silver Ship, and this shows their bid and their approximate bid, and the Boston Whaler. All of these boats, they're all commercial vessels. They all have a lead time of about six months, so we would need to place an order by the end of October. The aluminum hull boats have a great towing capacity. The Boston Whaler does not, will not tow boats. This is a picture of what we were looking at. So in terms of the financials, we are asking, because we are short on time, we are asking the five municipalities to commit to $60,000 each to help fund this. We would need the commitment by November 1st. I know this is a difficult time for the municipalities. It's a very challenging time for everyone. We are hoping, we are gonna need a third boat within the next couple of years, and we're hoping to have time to raise money through grants and the capital reserve and pay for the third boat that way. So these are the next steps. We'd like to secure the funding and order the boats, and then hopefully in April, get delivery. I'd like to turn it back over to the town council now.
Joan, if I could, Joan, if I could finish up. So I think Joan has articulated the challenges that we had last year with COVID, but these, this was, COVID exacerbated situations that have been brewing on Candlewood for the last three summers now. We are dealing with more overcrowding, dealing with situations where our patrol officers are in more dangerous situations. In other words, this is not your father's Candlewood Lake. The dynamic has changed out there, and COVID in the last year really just exacerbated what is the building for the last couple of years. And what it's done is it's put an incredible amount of stress not only on our patrol, but on our assets that we have out there on the water. And as you can see from Joan's presentation, there's only one or two of these boats that are more than a couple of years old. So we have been working with, you know, old resources, really, you know, relying on fundraising, trying to squirrel away a few dollars into our capital reserve fund on a year-to-year basis, and unfortunately, it's finally caught up with us. The, so I think that, you know, the requests we're making are really asking the towns to help us rise to the challenges that we are all of a sudden faced with, and you know, depending on when COVID ends, we will most likely be in the same situation next spring as we were. I've been on, I've been on, living on Candlewood Lake my whole life. I've been on the Candlewood Lake Authority. In November will be 21 years. I have never seen a season like this. The lake was filled in March of last year when all the Manhattanites came up and occupied their home when COVID hit New York City. So bottom line, I think that we, we really need your help. We need the towns' help. The situation, the dynamic out there on the water has changed dramatically, so we would appreciate any support that we can get.
Pete?
Welcome to council. Have any questions? Chris?
Yes. Oh, Chris, go ahead. Sorry, I didn't see.
Yeah, so I have a few questions. One, you talk about the two boats where the hulls failed. Could you expand upon that? What, how did they fail? Crack?
The boats were 20 years old. So one of them, the, you know, the console physically detached from the floor base of the, of the vessel, and a lot of that comes with just years of towing boats. We had a boat that we got rid of a couple of years ago where literally the transom of the boat tore off of the hull from towing boats. So it's just that type of wear and tear, and one of the reasons why our first preference is to go with an aluminum hull is they last much longer. And if you look around the lake, most of the towns now have fireboats and rescue boats, and they're all aluminum hull boats. So that's, you know, we'll get a much, you know, longer meantime between failure going in that direction, and we won't get the wear and tear on the fiberglass hull. Having said that, we're getting a long life out of our boats. I mean, the Steiger craft, I think, has been around since, you know, the late 80s. I forget what the date was, but, you know, we do think we need to, given the wear and tear and the extra hours that we're going to have to put out there to respond to the changing dynamics, I think we need to take our equipment to the next level.
And I assume you've considered repairing as opposed to replacing and deem that not to be a viable option?
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, and then lastly, you're looking for 60K from all of the towns. Is this an all-or-nothing thing? What if one or two towns say yes, another couple towns say no? Then what are you gonna do?
Joan, I'm gonna let you respond to that.
Yeah, I mean, we're looking at what the next steps would be and how much more discussion you would, you would want from us, but I think it would make sense for the towns to, you know, if they're willing to do this, to put a stipulation that the other towns need to also agree to it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for the presentation, and thanks for all the stuff you do on the lake to take care of things. I realize that you have had some unusual things, and yes, times are changing. It's not the way it was when I was a kid. But my other question really is, so you bought a used boat that's a good one, and you're proud to have it. What about some more used boats? Are you considering that?
So I'll take that one. So we would like to get away from that because it hasn't been working. I mean, one of the issues, I wouldn't say we're proud of the 1999 boat we just purchased. The boats that the patrolmen were on this summer, by the time they got off their shifts, their boats and socks were soaking wet because the boats were taking on so much water. I mean, this is law enforcement. I personally, I think.
Right, but can I ask a question, Joan? Not to interrupt you, but it's getting late. I just want to know, so like anything that any of us would buy, I'm not challenging you. I just want to understand something. If I were to go out and buy a boat and I was buying a used boat, I'd take it for a ride, and if I got my feet wet while I was doing it, I probably wouldn't buy it. So I'm assuming it was the use of the boat that caused this to happen. Is that correct?
The two boats that failed, yes. Not yes, but the two boats that failed.
Yeah, and you know, we're, you know, we're moving the deck shares on the Titanic. For instance, one of the failed boats, the Steiger craft, where the center console physically detached from the hull of the boat.
Okay.
That motor, we have a failing motor on our workboat that we use to take the buoys out of the lake. We've now got to move that motor off of that failed boat onto the workboat so that we can get the buoys out of the lake, and.
Okay, so let's, Mark, I don't, I don't mean to keep interrupting you, but I just want to get to the nut of this, which is you want some money because you want to buy some new boats. So I guess I'm saying is, two things I wanted to know. You answered one. The next one is, what do other lakes of comparable size and usage, the size of our lake isn't so much as important as the number of people who are on it all the time, and that cause you to have to use your boat to get from A to B, what are other lakes doing? And do you look at that, and do you look at what they bought and how long that lasts before you decide on what you're gonna spend $60,000 on? Just due diligence, I'm asking.
Yes, we are, we have been surveying, you know, this was part of a bigger project of, you know, coming up with long-term plans for Lake Authority. The reason we are in crunch time right now is because we learned that the build time for these commercial-purpose boats is only six months. I mean, it is six months. So we were planning on coming to the towns in January with a large amount of data with this information. You're saying we started reaching out to some of the other lakes. Like I said, Lake Lilinona just purchased this Metal Shark boat, I think, a year or two ago. They've been happy with it. Some of the other, many of the other states, the lakes are patrolled by, by state troopers, by the state, not by, like, their own lake authorities.
So what kind of boat do they use? I'm just asking, you don't have to give me, I understand you have the information, and I know that you need new boats. I just want to know if you checked with, if the state police uses a certain type of boat, and they're happy and it lasts a long time, do you look at that one? That's all.
Yes.
I don't know your criteria for deciding. I'm not an expert in boats, so I leave it up to you. But I just want, you know, as we consider that kind of money at a time when, you know, we don't have it pouring around, I'd like to just be sure that you have checked elsewhere, because it's easy to think that you know what is best when maybe somebody else knows something else that you don't know. That's all. Sometimes we don't know what we don't know, and this group right here is very guilty of that happening. So I'm asking you if you have looked at all the other things, because that's a lot of money. That's all.
Agreed. So Mark Howard is the one who has been doing the research on this. I know, I forgot if it was Lake George or one of the Pennsylvania lakes. They use the Boston Whalers, the commercial Boston Whalers that was on, on the list of the things we looked at, and Mark's been talking to a lot of different lakes and a lot of different boat manufacturers, so he would be, you know, the one to answer that in more depth.
So, you know, I can just speak to some of the vessels. The Boston Whaler is a commercial vessel, but it is not qualified to tow any vessels. You know, the Marine Patrol does approximately seven toes a week, and generally, the ask is for us to take them back to wherever they might have originated their journey from, whether that's New Milford or Brookfield, and wherever they might be on the lake. So that could be an hour of towing, and generally, that is what we're obligated or what we wind up finding ourselves in that situation where we're gonna be with them for at least 45 minutes towing.
Are you obligated to do that?
Well, what we do is generally make sure that we get them to the closest dock and then provide them with cell phones to call for assistance or Uber or anything, you know, that they can do, or call their marina.
Right, so you wouldn't really be taking me all the way from Danbury back to New Milford?
No, but generally, it winds up being, you know, something that is, you know, maybe 20 minutes away that, you know, if you have all the information, you know, that you're given, and the conditions of the lake, if you can, if you're within line of sight of your dock, it's tough to drop somebody off at a neighbor's.
But you said it was like an hour thing, so that's why I was asking if that was an obligatory thing that you were charged with doing. So the answer to that is no, but you do it to be nice and kind, and that's fine. Gotcha.
Can I just answer your question about looking for used boats? No, it's kind of like if the police department comes to you and they need more cars, you don't usually get them used cars. We have been buying used boats. They don't last very long. We keep having, they keep them together with, you know, silly glue practically, and so the ROI on new boats is significantly better. So looking, so the answer to your question is, could you, like, could you skip along buying a crummy boat that lasts for two years? You probably could, but it would not be a good financial decision?
I'm not asking you to do it. I'm just asking what you did look at. So please don't take my questions as being confrontational to what you guys, what your goal is. I'm asking what the people who pay the taxes in this town ask us, so.
No, I understand, and I guess I'm trying to answer this because, yes, we have spent the last three weeks talking to, today I talked with Lake Zora, we've talked to Lake Lilinona, we've talked to Lake Warham, we've talked to Lake George, we've talked to the lakes in New Hampshire, we've talked to the lakes in Maine, we've talked to the lakes.
That's good. I'm happy. That's what you should do, and I appreciate that you did.
Yes, and that's what we have been doing. We've been talking to them not only about the boats, but how they set up their patrols and how they deal with noise and invasive species and all those other issues. But nobody was answering your question. I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Get unmuted, so.
Thank you.
I want to answer.
Yeah, I think what might help us out is, I know it's a horrible comparison, but with cars, for example, it's, and I know rather than miles, yours boats are. For example, it's, and I know rather than miles, yours boats are measured in hours of use. For, you know, so for example, my car has 200,000 miles on it, okay? Am I gonna buy a, a new car? The answer is yes. Am I gonna wait for it to break? The answer is no. In your case, and I think you made a very good point, being a first responder and emergency personnel, you can't just guess, well, is the engine gonna work? Will I be able to tow this away and prevent an accident? So I'm assuming there's thousands of hours a week put on these boats you use.
Correct.
We're running these things into the ground. They're failing.
So you're talking about 1,000 miles a week if it were a car is what I'm trying to get at here. I mean, the hours, you know, it's just a tremendous strain on all of them. And in Lake George, yeah, they have the county sheriffs doing it, and they do use the Boston Whalers.
And the other thing, David, is because we have a short season, you know, our season runs from essentially May to, you know, middle of October. When we have one of our three or four boats a lot of commission, it, it hampers our operation. It hampers public safety.
Okay, I, I, I would never buy, I, I think you're very prudent with a new boat. Actually, I thought the prices were rather low. I thought they'd be in around the 200 to 50 range for an emergency one, but 150 will do.
Very good.
So I support spending the $60,000. I think it's just like somebody else said, you know, if you, the police cars are failing, we don't buy them a used police car. It just doesn't make sense. You know, if the boats have failed, the boats have failed. You buy a used boat and the boat fails. So it's just wasted money. And these people perform a really important job, just as the police in the town perform. They're just as responsible on candlewood. And with more and more people coming into the area, these people are not going away next year. They're gonna be here. So a lot of them have moved permanently, changed to working from home. They're not going back to the city anymore. So, you know, it, it is gonna get more congested and more dangerous, and they need to have the proper equipment to do their jobs. So I am 100% in back of this purchase. I, I think it's money well spent.
Someone asked, if all the towns get, someone asked you earlier, and I don't, I didn't hear the answer. Do you have a commitment from all five towns to put in this money, same amount?
Asking all five towns to, we are asking each of the five towns that we're doing it all at the same time because you're all meeting at the same, you know, we talked to New Fairfield last week. We're talking to Sherman later this week. We're talking to Brookfield next Monday, and we're talking to Danbury on Tuesday, we hope.
So Katie, her response was if we decide to go ahead, it would be contingent on all the other towns.
Ah, I didn't hear all that. Okay, good, thank you.
One last comment. Joan and Mary Ann, correct me if I'm wrong. These funds will not be spent until May of next year. Am I correct?
If we use, if we go with the metal shark, they don't require payment until we get the boat, it's net 30. The, the silver one, we probably would have to pay upfront. But we're also not sure, we have to look at the legalities of whether or not, since we, if we wouldn't have the cash, whether or not we can make the order, given the general statute of the state, because we don't have the funding. So we're trying to get an answer on that right now.
Does anybody have any other questions?
Well, in terms of procedure, when, when, if you make the motion, I would just like you to, you know, we're hoping that all five towns will agree to fully fund this. But if that's not the case, and we can only get one, I'd like the, the motion to say not to exceed 60,000 and, you know, maybe we can only do one. So I, I want to make sure that whatever motion passes today is, is good, whatever happens with the other four towns.
Thank you.
Pete, where would the money come from?
So that was the thing I was saying, speaking with our finance director. Lloyd, can you unmute Greg Assepaugh? We would ask for the motion to read, like we've done in past times, is if you were to decide to make the $60,000 motion, the money would come from any account that the finance director would deem appropriate. So that because this is a non-budgetary item, we have to look through all of our, you know, all of our line items to see where we could get this, this funding for. So we'd have to give the flexibility to Greg. Am I correct, Greg?
That's correct. This is kind of quick to drop in our laps, and it's not an insignificant amount of money. I wouldn't commit at this time where I would take the money from, but if you guys, if, if you folks decide to do this, let me worry about that.
Yeah, I, I'm confident with you. I, I don't, I don't see any problem with that. And, you know, judging with our fund balances at the end of the year for the last.
That may be, David, but I'd like to say this. We're the first town you're asking this of, right?
Yeah, I didn't finish.
Fairfield last week.
And what they, I'm sorry, David, I thought you were done.
No, I was gonna say, sorry, that's okay. I was gonna say with our fund balances over the last five years, and I'll, you know, last year was abnormal, I'll give you that. I certainly think that $60,000 would be prudent, particularly when we're talking about the, you know, as I said, the first responder status, the educational component, which I think we get about quite a bit too, so that we don't have to respond to accidents and things like that.
And what did the New Fairfield?
It's an investment in the public welfare, and that's what we're gonna do.
I'm not arguing that. But what did New Fairfield say after you told them about what you wanted? Did they agree?
They were not ready at that time to vote on it. They asked us to come back in two weeks to their next meeting.
How about, I'd like to suggest that to our council people. I think Greg has a good point. I think we should really know what we're doing as far as paying for something before we agree to do so.
And I guess I'd like a couple of weeks to maybe hear some public comment as well. I mean, does, does, what does a couple of weeks do to your schedule, Joan?
We would need to secure the funds by the end of October. I, I don't know what your meeting schedule was like.
We, we've also had similar things with the five towns where their approval was contingent on the approval of the other four towns.
Who wants to jump in the water first? So who wants to jump in the water first?
Joan, our next meeting is October the, probably the 13th. It is a holiday.
In, in two weeks, we can come back to it. I, I, I don't see any problem with that.
I do want to hear what the, what the public has to say to us. I mean, that's why I asked, I told you, that's why I ask these kinds of questions, because those are the kind of questions they're gonna ask me. So, and then, you know, you'll have a better sense of what the other towns are thinking as well. So if you're amenable to coming back.
Yeah, yes, of course.
Mary Ann?
Yes. Absolutely.
Katie, Steve, I wanted to add something that you can, the.
You're breaking up, Steve.
Steve, your audio is horrible.
I'm sorry. It's probably my.
Still breaking up.
So is it a sense from the council to put this back on the agenda for the next meeting and kind of finalize it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what I would like to do.
What do we, we should decide that what specifically we want between now and then? If it's, if it's something that, I mean, do we need, is there anything we specifically need? If we're gonna push it off, because I don't want to keep pushing. Well, I think it'd give Greg a better chance to take a look at the finances. It gives him another couple of weeks and, you know, to see, you know, compare it with how much we have in our budgets, what has been spent, what hasn't been spent, things of that nature.
And I'd like to share questions, like Chris and I are both thinking the same thing, that people are gonna ask us some questions, so we can have your information or send it through the mayor to you if people are asking us questions that we haven't come up with yet. I'm sure you'd be happy to answer those.
Again, I'm confident with it because we've had two declarations of emergency where we gave the mayor latitude to spend up to $350,000. Now, granted.
For the COVID protection of our town, I, I realize boats are important, Dave, but I think that's a little bit of a stretch to say that they're equivalent to saving children and people like that. So I don't think they're saying that either. So there, you can take a couple of weeks. That's what I think I would like.
I was going to say that we've had a couple of declarations where we've allocated monies to the mayor to spend, yes, to, for the betterment of the town and this, that, and the other. That's all I was going to say.
Right, but I don't think I could compare that COVID response money to this, so. It's just me personally, Dave, just me is my.
I would just, I would just like.
Your money comes from, and I, and I agree, we can give Greg a couple of weeks to determine where it can come from. That's all.
Yeah, I'd like some time to discuss this with the mayor, frankly.
So we're gonna table this, Mayor, till October 13th? Counsel?
Yes.
Yeah. Hey, Jane?
Yep, it's okay. We're good.
Well, you need, you should take a vote to table it, but that's, okay.
Okay.
You wanna make the motion, Dave?
I move we table this item about the appropriation for two patrol boats to our meeting of October the 13th.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Bill, any extensions? Thank you.
And I want to thank you guys from the authority for coming and giving us all this. And I think we will have some more questions, but, you know, certainly not opposed to helping, that's for sure.
And you provided excellent information, so thank you, David.
Thank you.
And your patience is appreciated. It's been a long meeting and you've been waiting around. So your patience is appreciated.
We have our own three-hour Zoom meetings.
So you're used to it by now.
Thank you for attending tonight.
Thank you, everyone.
See you in a couple of weeks.
Okay, thank you.
So our final is item 12, which would be an update from our finance director, Mr. Assepaugh.
Good evening, everyone. I just want to give you a brief update on tax collections. As of the close of business Friday, the total difference between what we collected in fiscal year 20 and fiscal year 21 is approximately $1.46 million. The breakdown of this is 61.9% is real estate and 38.1% is motor vehicles. There are four days of collection remaining. It is my hope that we get below 1 million by the close of business October 1st. I'd also like to commend our tax collector, Nancy McGavick, who performed professionally under adverse circumstances during this time. The second thing I'd like to talk about, I'm looking for consent to close two dormant electric supply locations. One being 128 Buckingham, that's the Northville School, and 10 Wheaton, which is Carlson's Grove. These accounts have not had any activity for several, for a couple of years. However, we are incurring delivery charges at $44 and $65 a month from Eversort.
Well, are they using the power at the Northville School?
That's what I'm saying. There has, there's been.
Have you asked, have you asked the people that are, you know, the preservation group or whatever they are called?
Well, I'm asking you folks. I don't know. I'm looking for some kind of direction.
Well, I, I know this is gonna come to a shock to you, but I have no idea. I didn't even know they had electricity. But there is a group that takes care of that school, right, Mayor?
Yes.
And I would say we better ask them.
Who? Who are they? I don't know these people.
I think it's the Trust for Historic Preservation. Is that what it is?
It's the root schoolhouse. That'd be Rob Burkhart.
Yeah, I know the person, but I didn't know the name of the group. But if, if there's power there, I'm not sure what they're using it for, but.
That's the thing. It's not been used in the past two years.
Well, oh, really?
That's what I'm saying, yeah. They have not, there's been no supply used. You know how they break electric bills down, supply and delivery? All we're, all we've paid for the last two-plus years are delivery charges. There's been absolutely zero usage of, of electricity at these locations.
And that's a town building, isn't it, Mayor?
Yes.
Okay.
Greg, how much of the delivery charge has been?
Um, let's see. The delivery charges for that location.
You just sent an email about that, did you? I mean, find.
You're with me. I have the bills here somewhere. Well, one of them.
Another one, Northville, and what was.
One of them I can tell you is 44. I believe that one's $44 a month.
I can.
And the one for, no, that's 65 a month. And Carlson's Grove is 44 a month.
Carlson's Grove, what, what do we power there?
That's, is it, that's the soccer field, the pavilion.
Yeah.
For over two years, that has, no supply has been used in, on that account. I mean, if you folks want to keep it open, that's fine. I just want to make you aware that we're incurring delivery charges without electricity being used.
And what's the total of both of them? 65? I didn't hear what the other one was.
44 a month.
Okay, okay. So we're paying $110 a month.
Right, for, you know, the past couple of years.
$2,500.
Nice chunk of change.
Yeah, I mean, you know.
Nice down payment on a boat.
There you go, right. So why don't we just stop it? I mean, who's in charge of that kind of thing, Pete? How do we know that? I thought we had an energy audit done.
That's the, that's all the stuff we're working on. So the council.
Okay, then. Off with their heads.
To do, to do.
Well, I don't know about Carlson Grove, but David.
Is this something that the council votes on, on where we have electricity? Shouldn't it just be?
I believe the council endorsed, as far as I know, the Carlson Grove usage. You did the same thing, I guess, recently down on Young's Field, okay? You, you endorsed the, the use and the connection for electricity to be installed at that location and used. So I'm gonna be monitoring that as well. If we don't see usage, I'm gonna bring that to your attention as well. I mean, I don't want to go ahead and close these and have somebody say, hey, why did you close these? Who, under whose authority? I believe the council created.
Well, let me ask this, Greg. Is, are these the only two that are, that you found?
Yeah, these are the only two, yeah.
So I guess we should investigate that.
Yeah, I would ask whoever is responsible for each facilities at each place.
Carlson Grove is under the jurisdiction of Park and Rec.
I, I reached out to, to Calhoun, and he said that, you know, the council made it possible for this to happen at some point in time. So he didn't have an opinion either or. I, I reached out to both, you know, Public Works and Parks and asked them, you know, their opinion if, you know, they're okay with closing it. And, you know, the response was that these accounts were created by council.
It's not, they don't want to be the ones. Okay, so then somebody's gotta ask the people that are in charge in Northville. The town owns it, and Rob Burkhart, I know he's involved in that, Pete.
Yeah, I, I agree with Katie. I mean, just ask Parks and Rec and, you know, and, and if they say, if they pass it back to us, then well, we make the decision. And the same with Northville Schoolhouse. They have a commission committee, I believe, you know, and do it that way. I mean.
What do they do with the outlet on Young's Field? I mean, we used to have to go through a whole hoopla to get power during the duck race.
It's for events.
Up on that, by the pole where you, oh, okay. Yeah, there was power there before. I, I see. So nobody's using it. Well, nobody's really going anywhere these days, Greg, to party, hearty.
I understand that with COVID, but this is two years in a row, Katie, that, that it hasn't been used. And there wasn't COVID a year ago.
All right.
I'll keep, you know, I know, you know, it's your call.
Well, we'll just. I know it's not your job, Greg, but.
Don't we? Mary Jean, do you know what goes on down there?
No, I don't know. But I don't know what Northville Schoolhouse has to do with it anyway, because I don't.
Well, they don't have, I didn't even know they still had power there. You know, they don't do anything.
They don't. There's no power at Northville Schoolhouse. There's nothing.
Apparently there is, somewhere.
I'd like to move to table this to our next meeting, too. And hopefully, we'll get some answers from the two, two entities that are in charge of the, the two areas that we're talking about. And if we get no answer, then, well, we just roll ahead.
Mayor, would you like me to, to follow up on this for you? I would be happy to follow up.
And we have a, can we have a second for Dave's motion?
Second.
Any other discussion? All of us in favor?
Aye.
Bill, any extensions? Walter?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Have a good night, all.
Thank you, Mayor. Bye.
Night, everyone.
Bye.